Hello.
There's a big crowd of us today.
Yeah. We have four, so. It's 4:30, so we'll get going, call the order, the study meeting of the West Valley City Council. Note that between those in person and those online, we do have a quorum. Mayor Bigelow has excused today. Tom Hune may be joining us later, as may Don Christensen. First time in my business, we have the minute of September 21st, 2021.
I move for approval of those minutes.
Second.
We have a motion in a second without any objection. We will consider the minutes approved unanimously. Business coming up for October 5th. We have a public hearing on the opening of the 2021-2022 budget. And the ordinance 21-58. We're gonna get a presentation on this?
Yes, we have Jim Carpenter with us tonight and Lou Jim, and she's ready to talk you through it.
We're going to look at the first quarter budget openings for this fiscal year. And we've added a statement to the top of the footnotes document, and I'll read that so you'll know what it says. As authorized by the Uniform Financial Procedures Act of Utah Cities, the operating budget of West Valley City is periodically amended to accommodate regular and necessary changes in expenditures and revenues that occur throughout the fiscal year. These budget modifications are called budget openings. They are considered by the city council accompanied by a public hearing to provide authorization to extend resources for grants received, rollovers of projects from prior years, emergency expenditures, take advantage of economic opportunities or other expenditures deemed to be appropriate and timely. Regular budget openings are necessary to maintain regular and orderly city operations and stay in compliance with state laws. The budget openings on this list of footnotes is separated into three sections. The first section is rollovers, and these are rollovers that were funded and appropriated in a previous year but not completed. The second section is for grants. These are new grants that the city has been awarded. The last section is titled "Other", and these budget openings can include new money, new projects, donations, reimbursements, all of which can happen during the normal operations of the city. That's all I have. Are there any questions?
Thank you for informing us. And looking at the list, there are quite a number this time. Of course, the grants and the rollovers, we're pretty used to those. Those have already been approved in some form or another. Well, all of them have been approved. And then looking at the other category, we have things such as monies received for helping to fight fires in California, monies received, donations for the Utah Veterans Memorial Project, and the like. Does anybody have any questions about the budget or any item in this opening or? Nicole, you like to say anything? Okay. Then, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll move on to item number six, which is a consent agenda item, Resolution 21-175, or real estate purchase agreement and warrant to deed, public utility easement at 4914 West, 4700 South. Is anybody wanting any discussion on that item being a consent agenda item? It looks like we're good. Well, then we'll move on to the exciting part. Item number seven, A, we have Margaret Peterson here to report on the Community Education Partnership.
I'll take this off so you can hear me. I appreciate this opportunity to be here this afternoon representing the Community Education Partnership. Appreciate board members who are here. Steve Bueller is our chairman. Appreciate Steve has served on the board. I looked all this up, Steve. 11 years, over 11 years, Steve has served on our board. He actually was brought onto the board by Carolyn Burt, who was a former.
I wasn't even shaving then.
I'm sure you'll continue serving until you're using the cane. We have Emily Six, who is here. She's been on the board about five years, done a super job. I believe we may have some other board members who are joining on Zoom. I don't know, is there any way I can see if to introduce them or if they wave their hand at you, can you see who they are?
Attendees or?
No, they're just watching on YouTube.
They're just watching, you can't see who they are? Well, if there's anyone here from the Community Education Partnership Board, we appreciate you joining this afternoon. I thought I'd give just a quick historical background. Time flies and life is very different the past couple of years. So I thought I'd just go back a little bit and refresh our memories on how this all started. 19 years ago in 2002, we started a committee of community people who are concerned about the outcomes of our students in West Valley City. And we had religious leaders, educational leaders, city leaders, anyone who's interested in improving our education. We started that in 2002, and in 2004, we were granted our IRS nonprofit status. And in 2003, we were actually in this very room. There was a lady sitting in the corner, I didn't know who she was. At the end of the meeting, she introduced herself. She was the Director of Workforce Services, the Minister of Grants. She said, I'd like to give you some grants. Wow, so the door opened right there in 2003 with our first grant opportunities. And that opened the door to many, many more, ultimately almost $12 million we received in grant funds over 19 years. So our funding timeline, there's a chart in your packet that shows how we've received and how much money we've received over the 19 years in grant funds. And these are federal US Department of Education grants allocated to the Utah Board of Education. We also had several of the grants are listed in the blue box there. United Way, Utah Department of Workforce Services, Commission on Criminal Justice, Salt Lake County, and West Valley City has graciously contributed every year. And then other smaller donations for $11.5 million over 19 years. So it's been a great opportunity, but times have changed. Grantors have changed their priorities and the way they distribute funds around the state. And it used to be a lot of the communities along the West Valley Front got a good substantial amount of funding for our at-risk children. Now it's just different. So you can see how it's all changed. And this year we have about $100,000, and by May it'll be gone. Every penny will be gone of those federal grants. So you've heard the presentation before, how important it is for us to continue these opportunities for our at-risk kids. It's things and opportunities after school that the school district does not fund, or there are not other areas where schools can get money. Literally is left up to each individual principal. So I partnered with principals over the 19 years to help them out with the outcomes for their kids. And the next chart in your packet shows a history of 11 years of our teacher surveys. The band across the top shows the 10 questions. Actually, there's 11. If you count no improvement needed, which we do have a lot of kids, 26% average over 11 years, who came just for the opportunity of being there. So you can see how consistent our progress has been. Double-digit progress for 11 years in all of these different areas, homework, participation in class, and this means participation during the school day. So this is how their after-school program, their after-school learning impacts their school day learning, and they're all integrated. To have an opportunity to impact kids after school that makes a difference during the school day is tremendous. And we can see that over 11 years, these kids, by the way, attended 30 days or more. Almost 15,000 students were surveyed by their school day teachers. And with see this kind of progress, you can't deny that after-school programs make a difference, positive difference. 65% average academic improvement. Coming to school prepared and attendance during the school day improved an average of 28% over 11 years. Getting along with others, that's always a problem. And even during the difficult times we've had the last couple of years, 42% consistent improvement. So as Nicole and I've talked about for years, after-school programs make a difference, and that's why West Valley has been so wise and gracious to provide funding to help us out. We've also had 40 partners, community partners over 19 years. We're in our 12th year of partnership with the University of Utah School of Medicine. They do hands-on science activities for us to promote interest in science and going to college to get degrees in science. KUED does family night readings. Department of Pathology just done hands-on science workshop for us, also College of Engineering. We're in our seventh year of a wonderful partnership with Salt Lake Community College. The Computer Science Department takes us on field trips. Let's see if I can. We've got a picture on our website of our last field trip. Can you handle that? Thank you to the CP website. So here we have picture of these Community College Bruins bus taking us all down to Thanksgiving Point on August or June 2nd. And they promote computer science and science. We went to the Butterfly Biosphere, got some great pictures of that. And we all had our masks on, we're all out there learning. It was a tremendous experience. They cover all the costs for this. They also do summer computer science programs, three-day summer camps where they learn about coding, they go visit Adobe and different companies and learn about working in that environment. We have a drum bus. I don't know if you ever heard of the drum bus? These guys have converted a school bus to a red bus. They call it the drum bus. They've taken out all the seats and put benches around the inside of the interior. And they have African drums. And the kids learn how to sing and play drums, and it's all about anti-bullying. And I drove up one day and the whole bus was just rocking back and forth. So we have a grant this year to cover seven of these drum bus events for our kids. We have a new partner, Solsair Pump Services, right here in West Valley City, who's volunteered to do some service projects. So our operations, I wanted to show you that we meet all kinds of requirements for financial requirements for grantors, federal government, state government auditors. I mean, we are audited regularly by the Utah Board of Education auditors. We can hardly even breathe without wanting an audit from them.
But we always pass those audits.
Thank you, Chairman Bueller. We have passed every single dime, not even one write-up for any audit of any nature clear up to the federal level. I have to file nonprofit reports with the White House as well as the federal government, the US Department of Education, the State of Utah, Lieutenant Governor's Office. It's a huge amount of reporting required of nonprofits, and we've never had any kind of questioning or write-up of any kind. So our accounting and financial statements and check preparation are done by Sean Baden, CPA. Our auditor is Haney and Company. When we have federal funds that are greater than $750,000, we have to have a Yellow Book audit, which costs $10,000, and I have to raise money to cover that cost. But we no longer will have that kind of funding from the federal government because the grants are going away. Our tax preparation is done by Pinnacle Accountancy. The Executive Committee approves all expenses monthly and co-signs all checks. So when a after-school program has in their budget expenses of some nature, generally supplies, almost always supplies, they submit a reimbursement request along with the receipt. And I process that in a check request for the Executive Committee. They review all of that, all the documentation, and then they approve it. And then our CPA prepares the reimbursement checks. I maintain monthly budgets for every single after-school program. Every month they get an updated budget that shows their payroll and all of their supplies, expenses. So we have policies and procedures are all outlined on our website. So all the coordinators and principals, anyone can log into our coordinator page. I don't have my reading glasses on, I apologize. Gee, I can do this in two seconds when I'm not talking to you guys. Okay, so whenever a coordinator or principal has a question about policies and procedures for our after-school programs, they go right to our website. We have a program news, we post pictures. I could take you way deep into the website and show you some pictures, but if you want to do that later. So here are the latest reports that are due coming up, lots of reports. They can see the due dates and click for the worksheets. And all of the forums, the employment forums, reimbursement forums, all the policies, everything they need is right here. On our partner programs, there's another page that has our partner programs, more pages with resources. And then our data is also buried in here. So then we have another page for our Board of Directors. They can log in as board members and get minutes and agendas and insurance documents, everything from the corporation side. We have, of course, one of our best partners is Granite School District. They have developed a no-cost use of facilities agreement, so we are able to use any of the schools under the direction of the principals at no cost, which is a wonderful opportunity, saves millions of dollars. And our policies and procedures after school are compatible with the operation during the school day. For example, in emergencies or lockdown, something of that nature, our policies are adopted to be the same to follow through right from Granite District. And then for fire drills, we have separate, different fire drills after school since the kids are in different locations of the building. Any questions on all that historical part of the company?
Just tell us how many, I mean, this is limited to West Valley City boundaries, and how many schools within those boundaries have we provided a program for at one time or another, do you know? It's almost all of them, but.
About 29. There's a couple of schools that for some reason, the principals have never wanted to partner. But other than that, I could tell you who they are, but I won't. Just about every school, all three high schools, all four junior high schools and all elementaries, but probably one or two. At some time, we have provided support, and we also have done many grants and support for charter schools and private schools. So we have reached over 15,000 kids who just attended 30 days or more. And there's still many more who attend less than that. For example, high school and junior high, they usually don't have programs every day, and they come for 30 days. So we have another, I would say, another 20, 30,000 kids over 19 years that we've served. Thank you, Steve.
Any other questions for Margaret?
I have copies of financial statements, I have copies of all kinds of things. If you want to get deep into this or just get the fun part.
Oh.
Okay.
Fun parts, the fun part, right?
It's all fun. I was supposed to retire about 12 years ago. Wants to retire, you know, I hate to net. Okay, let's go into the mini-grant program. So I'm sure you recall hearing our transition from state and federal grants into funding mini-grants. So now, when our federal and state monies are gone, we'll have I think we'll have two programs with a few thousand dollars that will stretch out through April or May, and then it's all gone, it's all over. So we have, we've been very fortunate to receive some funding from West Valley City for mini-grants. They've been well-received. Last year, of course, with the pandemic, schools were shut down. We had to shut down our after-school programs as well for much of the year from from November to about March. Very little, if anything, was going on, maybe a little bit of tutoring here and there. So we had too many grants at that time. One at Hillside Elementary, the principal applied for a summer program for last summer to help with the learning loss during the pandemic, and it was very successful. She wrote an excellent application on determining each and every student's status in reading and math and language skills. And then they picked the teachers at that same level, and they tutored them for eight weeks in the summer. So her report is upcoming, I'll see how their outcomes improved, I'm sure they were much better. We also had a Valley Junior mini-grant for after-school tutoring. Now, their kids, believe it or not, who do not have computers in our community, they don't have any way to access their school materials, which are all on a computer after school and to do their homework. So they come early or stay late, and we have tutors there that the CEP covers to help them out. So this year, the funds that we used last year, if you recall, the city loaned CEP $90,000 to cover our cash flow. The state was not reimbursing our expenses in a timely manner. So we were having a hard time covering our payroll. We had $80,000 monthly payroll on a regular basis. And it's against the law to not pay your employees within 30 days, the last day they worked. So we had to pay them, and I would make phone calls and emails to the state superintendents, and we cannot meet our contract obligation with the state if you don't pay us. It's a reimbursable grant. So until that got resolved, the city was very gracious to loan us $90,000 to cover that cash flow. So in the agreement that was signed last year with the city, they agreed to let us use that $90,000 for a first year of mini-grants. So since we only had two due to the pandemic, we have some carryover funds from last year. We have $61,731 remaining from last year. And this year, according to the contract, will be awarded another $90,000. So this year we have $151,731 to have some great opportunities for some real learning opportunities in our after-school programs. So I send out an RFP with instructions and guidelines for an application. And since I've written dozens and dozens of grants, I made this what I thought was the best application you could possibly come up with. And it's an essay. In fact, one principal says, well, what do you mean? I have to write it. Can't I just fill in the blanks? No, you just tell your story. Tell us what your goals and objectives are, how do you want to accomplish them, how you will measure those goals. So we received seven applications. Actually, eight, six are approved. And we have two in process with new principals who are just swamped, they haven't quite finished theirs. And so the total with our applications are $146,585. So if you'd like to see our application, I have them here. I also have all the applications that were turned in, if you want to see any of those. But the goal for every application, every program, every project is an academic component and an enrichment component to support the academic component. And the academic could be reading or math or science, any of those things that students need to learn during the school year. I don't say anything about testing. But of course, the goal is to measure their testing or to measure their learning with some testing. So in the application, they also state how they will measure their outcomes, and it's through the standard measurements that they use at school. At the end of the project, they'll turn in a report which lists their goals and objectives, how they met them, and the outcomes, how they measured them, and how the improvements were generated through their projects. So every single one of them has, it's not, it's not a go-out-and-play soccer. These are not, even though fitness could be an enrichment in the project, these are not babysitting, sit-around-and-color opportunities. These are academic and academic enrichment opportunities. And at the end of their project, we'll continue with our teacher surveys. So as long as we issue mini-grants, we'll have more years of teacher survey results with the same questions. And also they turn in an annual report that will list their project, how many attended, how many families were involved, how they measured their outcomes. And I've also asked them to recognize West Valley City in some way during their project. So they put CEP logo on their handouts and West Valley City. They will acknowledge them when they have like parent meetings, they'll acknowledge where the funding came. That's, parents usually think everything comes from the school district. So we want parents and families and school administrators and teachers to understand that this is a community partnership. It's not just a school district. So that's pretty much what I. So that's pretty much what I was planning to talk about. Did you have any questions or anything else you'd like to go or? I have things in my files here that can take you anywhere you want to go.
Margaret. I can just say we have a great board. A lot of people are volunteering their time to serve on the board. But Margaret will someday be known as the patron saint of after school programs and canonized, I'm sure. And. All of the work that she has done out of love. For these children and for education just really ought to be recognized. Also, Margaret, when we decided as a city to. Provide additional funding for the after school programs, I believe that was a unanimous vote and. I think that you should be comfortable in being able to carry on. And continue to serve these children. As you were giving your report, it reminded me of we, we have now a program with college students that are through the University of Utah Business. College and we're just kind of continuing on to support our. Residents, our young residents and help them become successful. And it starts with their elementary school education and. As supported by the CEP. So thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you very much. I have lots of stories, but there's, there's one that comes to mind that I'll just. Close my presentation in this with this story. I was at Hunter High. We have a math lab there. That we started. Probably six years ago. And the math lab is conducted, it's after school conducted by the math teachers during the day and the teachers track the students' progress in their class, their math class. At all different levels, grade levels. And then they invite the kids to come. If they haven't passed even one section. Of their math class, they'll invite them to come in and sit down. They'll give them three choices. You can take the credit recovery class that costs each class is fifty dollars and you have to come and sit and do all these workbooks. Where you can come to the after school program for free and just learn this section that you haven't mastered. Or you can fail and not graduate. They had over eighty percent of the kids come to the after school math programs. And they would learn that section, then they pass that class and then graduated from high school. We helped our math lab program. Help the graduation rate under high go from the seventy percent range to the eighty percent range. So we had dedicated teachers and a method of them for them to help their kids. That's just one story. Oh, and then the grandmother came up to me and says she was just so happy, the first person in their family had graduated from high school. So there's no reason to retire. I'll just keep doing this as long as we have your support and we have an outstanding board, we'll just keep moving on. Any other questions? Well, thank you. Appreciate this opportunity. And did you want to say anything, Emily?
Come on up to the microphone.
Hi, yeah, my first introduction to CP was actually facilitating some intervention as part of a Department of Justice grant. Which had real outcomes for reducing juvenile delinquency. But one thing Margaret focuses on the the real logistics of this. I've served in the classrooms, I've gotten to see upfront what's actually happening with the kids and. I think one thing that for you guys to just really know, these programs are created by the coordinators and by the principals for their specific students in mind. So it's not just a blanket. Any old intervention that you could do across the US. It is, it's specifically designed for the students that they see day to day. And McKinsey and Co. did a study over students left behind during the pandemic and they found that minorities. Are about three to six months behind in math and reading minority students are. And so these students that that we work with, the schools, they're high risk and they just get an opportunity to catch up and to be where they should be anyway. And this, this program facilitates teachers being able to come in and give the intervention that they see that they need, that they are limited within their school hours to being able to give. And then the last thing I did want to share, at one of the schools that I was at, there was a cooking class. And this is kind of just like a real life enrichment here. They made donuts, they made Rice Krispie treats, they made lots of fun things, but they also taught kids how to make meals from canned food. Because a lot of these kids are getting their meals from the food drives from the the food. Pantries on campus and the students, the teachers are under a strict encouragement to get at least one meal a month from that pantry to normalize it. But then the kids are actually taught how to feed their families from the food that they're getting. So that is just another example of the enrichment that's happening. All normalized with right next to, you know, these really fun candy treats that they're making, but they're also learning real life applicable skills. That give them the tools that they need to succeed. So yeah, that's. Just wanted to highlight a little bit more of the of the fun component.
Thank you, and thank you for coming today. Move on to our next item, which is a report on Operation My Hometown.
Thank you, Nicole Cottle. And what a pleasure to come to come after Margaret. She really is the. The original problem solver and and what a great example of seeing identifying a real problem at the very most fundamental level and. Just solving it and by sheer grit, right, for so many years. What a pleasure and and. What a gift it's been to our cities. So thank you so much for that. It's really a remarkable. So today I I have the opportunity to report on Operation My Hometown and much like CEP. This, this for me has been such a such a pleasure and I'm so thankful for the opportunity that you have given me. To work in this area of our city and also on this project. It's really awesome. It's worked out really well despite all the crazy. Things that have gone on and for me, it. Really hits the mark on something similar to what. Margaret saw that as a council, you've instructed us so many times as staff to really find ways to make our neighborhoods livable and sustainable. And while we we know that ordinance enforcement has a place there and policing has a place there that this. This program really seeks to change those those things for good and. In a sustainable way and and because it was pilot, we didn't know how things were going to go and and it's been a crazy ride, but. Such a pleasure for me to work with the folks. That we've worked with on this. So I just appreciate it very much and I'll start with that. I was going to start with my own story. Margaret waited till the end, but I better wait till the end because I get a little choked up, which is weird. Okay, so Operation My Hometown, you're you're going to click or I'm going to click. I can click. If I can click, I'll click. Okay. I'm clicking and it's not going. Yep, that's what I did. You can click for me. It's all right. You'll go to the next slide. So as you'll recall, we've reported on this once before, Operation My Hometown started with what we call the Stansberry area. In orange there, it's about a thousand homes. We used our neighborhood health audit to decide which neighborhood to pilot. To understand how we might have an impact in the ideas that we originally had. Which were brought to us, as you'll recall, by the neighborhood. We actually have Mark Rupp with us here today and he was. He was in the very first meeting, at least that I attended that started this and. Lives near this area and certainly understands the neighborhood. But actually, Steve and I use the, Steve Pastrick and I use the Neighborhood Health Audit to. Select this first neighborhood. We've now expanded to what you see here, the four different areas. So it's about four thousand homes. Now, and our partners of which there are many. In fact, I got the list to make sure I wouldn't miss anyone. And honestly, the list is so long that I dare not start it because it's, it's just too long, too many to mention. But in this particular area, we are the great beneficiaries of many business partners and community partners, service providers. But also churches. We have thirty churches right in this area and we have seen those. Churches and ecclesiastical leaders of all stripes really step up and engage in this process as well as. Amazing, amazing step up from our business community and our and our other service providers. And I'll talk a little bit more about that as we go, but this is the current. Four neighborhoods. We have many what I would term full time leaders. Craig Thomas, certainly, and we're going to hear from Craig in just a minute. And Margot have definitely at the staff level been heavy, heavy lifters and carrying the weight of this as well. We have also a once a week task force call where all of the disciplines from the city are involved. So we have had. Help and lift from all the folks around the table. And then again, like I mentioned, our community volunteers and and partner volunteers that are, some are at full time. Forty hours a week and some wish they were at forty hours a week because they're at about seventy or eighty hours a week. So it is. Remarkable where our volunteer effort has come from and some of the really exciting stats that you'll see. Many of the volunteers are coming right from our neighborhoods and are lifting their their own neighborhoods and the neighborhoods around them. So it's really exciting. I'm just a little bit of by the numbers. Right now in these areas, we have a hundred and eighty residents serving in two hundred and thirty four blocks. You'll remember we divided these areas into blocks. Some blocks are as small as twelve homes, some are up to fifty, just depending on the status of the situation. And then we've been able to ask, could Joel. Sometimes really, really encourage our residents to be block captains and they have found, especially these hundred and eighty that are really committed, have found. Great benefit in that, I think in the end, but getting those in the beginning, especially during the pandemic was interesting. But truly, truly believe in the block captain system and the residents being those. Those block captains and that has that has served us really well. We have currently eighty, what I would term pretty much full time service volunteers. That come from all over the valley. They are the full time heavy lifter serving both in the community. Even not on days of service, even in between days of service, but also at the Community Resource Center, which we'll talk about in just a minute. We've had fifteen days of service. You'll recall those are on Saturdays. Massive lift. If you've driven through the area or come to a day of service, you see, all you really see is orange vests everywhere. And it is, it is impressive. We have some great pictures that we'll talk about as well. And that, those days of service serve two functions. First, as you'll recall, our our idea was let's do some, let's do some neighborhood improvement. Let's. Let's build up the the physical sustainability of the area and certainly those days of service do provide that. But what you'll note. On these Saturdays is it feels like an old fashioned barn raising and you go into the neighborhoods and go to visit the homes that are. Being worked on and neighbors are there. People are meeting each other and talking. There's a lot of socializing going on, a lot of work. But a lot of socializing between the neighbors and people in the neighborhood and it feels. Like a community. It feels like a neighborhood. It feels like a hometown and it's cool. And so the service days are important from a, we like to see homes improved. We like to see things that are lacking made better, but really they have served. A much greater purpose and that really is evident. I will say there is. A really heavy lift on service days and leading up to that from our volunteers. While we do have city employees engaged, the vast majority of that work. And I do mean the vast majority is handled by volunteers. Which is also remarkable. We've served two hundred and seventy different homes. That means during these days of service, they've had anything from. Gravel replacement to concrete replacement to painting. Safa emfasia, trees that were dangerous or or lacking. Fencing that needed replacement, general cleanup, all of the things you can imagine. If we rerun the gamut. So on an average day of service, we have fifty one of the full time volunteers that are usually in the area. We also, as I mentioned, have many volunteers from. All of the other both business partners that we have and churches in the area that come to those days of service. So the fifty one are the sort of full time called to the area volunteers, but there are many others. We also typically have at least a hundred residents and these are all just rough guesses. We're not, we're not counting heads, so to speak, but. Rough guesses, well, kind of are, people do sign in, but. About a hundred residents participate every Saturday and then about three hundred and eighty. To four hundred volunteers that come from outside of an area to provide the the sweat equity, so to speak, the labor and help. And so on a total, on an average day of service, it's about five hundred, five hundred and fifty people. And it is impactful visually when you drive down the streets. In fact, it's kind of impactful. Driving down the streets because people park on both sides and there there. There are shovels and fence posts and all the kinds of things that happen dumpsters during cleanup. So it's a, it's a little bit of a trick on those days. So in twenty twenty one, the volunteers all total have given fifteen thousand three hundred hours. Which is a huge, huge, huge volunteer number. And if you put even a very basic. Hourly wage to that, it's a, it's a stunning, it's a stunning number and something that we clearly as a city could not provide. On our, on our own, nor should we. In any, in any way, from the perspective of this is a community driven effort with a with a city assist. And it really has turned out to be exactly that. It has, it has come to that. Like I mentioned, we have about thirty community partners. One of the other stats that I included that I think you'll find remarkable. That I find truly remarkable is we have a a couple who have volunteered in this area, like I said, nearly full time. Their professional life before this was in real estate. And they came in very early on and realized that there were many people that were just on the cusp of being able to purchase a home. They may were, they may have been renting, they may have been coming from other areas and trying to get into a home. But they had other things that they needed to gain some understanding on or get some help with. And this couple has taken those folks and shepherded them through the process and that has resulted in forty. In forty folks finding, buying, purchasing homes. And in the timeframe that we're talking about, to have that many people engaged in that effort with just this couple is. Truly remarkable and the benefit of that, of course, is with homeownership in a particular neighborhood, you have that. Desire to stay, desire to build your, build your community and build your family and that is really. How it feels and what they say to us. And so as you've also heard, so that's kind of days of service, the general overview. As we go through the task force, we try to do all of the other things that we can as a city to help spiff up an area. One of the most remarkable things is the Community Resource Center. As you know, the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter Day Saints has agreed to allow their chapel to be used during the week. As a Community Resource Center. One thing that we learned really early on. Is that any service that any of our residents desire or need exists in the community, whether that's here, right here in West Valley. Whether that's in the county or whether it could be brought here, it exists in some form or fashion, but that we really were having problems connecting our folks. With those services in a, in a real way. Like, like Margaret was seeing where they were able to access the services or willing to access the services or knew about the services and what we learned. From this understanding we gained from the block captains and from others engaging with our residents is that. Bringing those services closer is what will really unlock the provision of service. And so the community center right there. In the community is the intent. The Community Resource Center has been, the one that's open now has been retrofitted. There's a big, beautiful computer lab. Many of the classrooms, classrooms have been retrofitted for for use in various classes of all, all types. The classes are being programmed based on what the community wants. So for instance, one of the first and craziest. Examples is are these piano lessons. They had thirty five kids. Who signed up to take piano lessons. They had thirty five keyboards donated. And if the, if the parent and the child will sign a little. Thing that says I agree to practice and I'm going to take care of the keyboard. They send the keyboard home with the, with the child and they come back for. Piano lessons the very next week and it has worked beautifully. In fact, I I happen to witness the first night of piano lessons and see these darling kids there with many of them there with their, their parents just. Plunking it right out. It was, it was great and to have thirty five and to have understanding that that's what the neighborhood desired. And could use just one example, I could give you a hundred examples that are like that. Very interesting to watch. In order to run the Community Resource Center, as you might imagine, it's. In order to run the Community Resource Center, as you might imagine, it's, it's quite a significant endeavor. Again, all done by volunteers. And it is really impressive to watch that team work. And as I mentioned, as I started to look down the list, there are so many, so many people who have given so much time that I hesitate to even dig into the list, but I will provide you with the list. So I'll write it up so you can see all those many names of these folks who are so engaged and who truly, the other beautiful thing about this, especially the people coming in to provide service at the community centers, they've fallen in love with our city. They've fallen in love with our people. And so when they go wherever they're from, when they go back to their homes, they talk about our city as a special place. They talk about, they, they have caught the, the beauty of it. And it's remarkable and they really do care about the people that are here. So to the Community Resource Center point, we did have a big giant open house. You saw a little bit of that on a video. They've had lots of events there like that, that have been very well attended and very consistent. The, the current game plan is that we would have seven of those facilities in the area that we're kind of expanding to and, and in the area that we're already in. So that's a, that's a big deal and a lot of work and something that's pretty impressive. But as we continue to figure the way and continue to dial it in, I think every community resource center will be different because the truth is every need is different and they're very adjustable. So piano lessons today, ukulele lessons tomorrow, after-school programs the next day. Then, then in the winter, it might be something totally different and they're, they're recognizing that. One of the other really awesome things about this program, both from the block captain setup and also the Community Resource Center, is that it's catching the attention of many providers who have said to us, who have come to us and said, we have never been able to penetrate into the neighborhoods, into the homes, into the people in the way that really is truly helpful. And we see this as the way can we partner with you? So, and, and how did, how did you do this? What is, how is this working? How can you understand, gain this understanding of, of the people? And so it's been remarkable to see that. And large, from institutions, large to small, the University of Utah, all the way down to our very smallest corporate partners, all feel that way. And we have many. So really what I, and I'd list some of those here, what I would like to just sort of turn to now, other than you've heard me say we've had lots of donation and I, and I could talk about, we learn machinery all day and what they've done. Again, the University of Utah, there are so many, but I hesitate to even go down the list, so I will send it to you. I want to talk quickly about expansion, then I'm going to have Craig come up for just two minutes. So there is a plan for expansion into the Granger, what we're calling the Granger area. Those boundaries kind of right now, as we're developing that, they kind of ebb and flow. But you can imagine what that is, kind of right around here, down to Redwood. Very different neighborhoods than where we've been. And each neighborhood that we've been and expanded into is very different, as you might imagine. The Chesterfield neighborhood and folks are very different, have different needs than the Granger area will. And we're dialed into those and in tune to those and able to make that change and expansion. You heard me say seven resource centers, that's what we're striving for basically this year, not this year, like in two months, but probably this fiscal year is better. And then we have been made aware and asked if we could help this program expand into three other cities in particular, Provo, Ogden, and Salt Lake City. And the very similar partners that are partnering with us here are partnering in those cities as well. So we've met with those cities. They, it's fun, so fun for us because they say, how, what? How are you doing this? And, and we're, we just give the smile, like, we don't know. It's crazy. We're just doing it. So they're engaged in that very much. And it'll be interesting to see how it expands. I think, again, the program is so dynamic that each city can tailor this to their own needs. But I think as a council, please be, take pride in the idea that, that, that you started it here and that we were able to facilitate that in a way that really resonates with people in a, in a massive way and really makes a difference. So I have secret sauce up here and I will tell you, I feel like, Craig, come up. I feel like Craig's whole last professional few years has been geared towards this program and this moment. And as you guys already know, Craig is a rock star, literal rock star. He knows everyone in the community. He's at every community event. Every community event is pristine because Craig kills himself to make it so. And I hear from every person I engage with, whether it's a community member, a leader in the community center, or any of our volunteers, nothing but extremely, extremely high praise for Craig. But I wanted Craig to come up and I want him to talk about my hometown and what, what his feelings are on it and what he thinks about it. Because as you know, I feel like Craig has known this all along and he's been waiting for the rest of us to catch up. And he's been patient with us and he's said, okay, sure, we can do a, we can do a spring fleeing. That's awesome too. And he's been waiting for us to all catch a glimpse of his, of his vision. But truly, I think his insight on this particular program is important for the council to hear. So Steve, you're not Steve, you're Craig. I'm used to saying Steve.
I'm one of the Steves. I'm not sure what to say now that she did that. I'm kind of embarrassed. I'm very gracious for the opportunity to be actually serving in the my hometown area. As many of you know, I'm a West Valley City native. I've worked here for twenty-one years. So West Valley City is my passion. This is my hometown, literally my hometown. So being able to work in these neighborhoods has been a, just a miraculous pleasure for me. We are seeing people's hearts and minds change. The sense of neighborhood that has maybe been lacking in some ways in some of these neighborhoods is starting to evolve and change. We're seeing neighbors connecting with one another. We're seeing them taking pride in their community, not just their neighborhood, but they're taking pride in their community as well. And those stories are contagious. We're seeing neighborhoods around the city starting to experience or hear about these stories and wanting to have that same experience in their neighborhoods as well. So I love my hometown. I love the project. I love what we've been able to accomplish. I'm looking forward to many, many, many years, well, at least nine, I've got nine until I retire, of, of having great experiences with, you know, my neighbors, the people that I grew up with here in West Valley City, the people that I've had the pleasure of serving for twenty-one years. It's those connections again that mean so much in those neighborhoods. Over and over again, we're hearing the stories of residents that have lived in the city for many, many decades and they don't know their neighbors. During the pandemic, there was a great sense of isolation for many of us and for many of our neighborhoods. And my hometown pushed through that and they were able to start working on connecting neighbors again. It's been a powerful tool for these neighborhoods in, in seeking change, learning how to make change. And it's driving them to do things on their own that they maybe hadn't done in the past as well. So it's been a miraculous project for us and it's been fantastic for the city, fantastic for our residents. And I just hope it continues. Sorry.
He's definitely the right man for the job. And seriously, I feel like he's been training for this marathon in all the many things that he already does for our community for so long. And it is high praise for me to have Craig say, this is the right thing. This is the way, this is the way to help our residents, truly help them, because I know he knows. And I appreciate his, his efforts as well because without him, it would not have proceeded in the same fashion that it has. And truly those folks in our pilot areas in particular, but all over the city, as you know, have, have high praise for him always and can feel his desire to help and be of help to them. So he's our secret sauce. I do have two videos, but before the videos start, I better tell my own story if I can. And truly, the most awesome thing about my hometown is we could tell stories that would, that would truly delight you as a council for days. I feel like we could tell those stories for days because of the, because of the great feeling that that's, that it's brought to the neighborhood and because of the residents in the neighborhood. But like Craig, as you know, I've been here twenty-three years and also feels like my hometown. I just grew up in Taylorsville. The mall was my mall. And, and this city is my city. Never in my life, never in my career, have I ever had the opportunity to have residents, more than one, run to me and throw their arms around my neck and say, thank you. Thank you for this program. And I have to say, go see Craig or go see Margaret. But it is, it is lovely and you can tell emotional for me because our residents, as you know, are amazing and wonderful people. And to have them receive this program in that way and to participate in that way and be so, so, so sweet about it has been a huge blessing in my life, huge impact on me professionally and truly one of my favorite projects here at the city. And so again, I just appreciate it. And while it hasn't been without its problems or trauma or hurdles or even unhappy, some folks are not all, not everybody's happy, but most people are happy. What a great thing this is. And thank you for allowing us to continue to do it. And we'll keep updating you and thank you for your participation in it as well. And we have one more day of service. It's next week. It's Saturday, the ninth. That's two weeks. Saturday, the ninth, and then they'll wrap up days of service for the year, but they will go to community center all the time. So I'll show you these two quick, very short, just clips of the days of service and Community Resource Center and then I'll be done. Matt's so good. He always gets the good. He always gets the good video. Okay, let's see. Here's the Community Resource Center just quickly. And again, it's a short one also, and then I can take any questions. Okay, that's all I have to present, but I can answer any questions you might have. And I will say that's the first time I've choked up at this podium. So excuse my choking up.
You know, when we had the kickoff dinner, it was one of the very last things I did before I went on vacation and the world fell apart because I was on vacation is how I see it. I was, I'm a jinx. But it really concerned me that this program wasn't going to get off its feet because of the pandemic. But what a, what a credit to you, to Craig, to all of the volunteers, everybody who said, no, we're not going to let this die. We're going to push through and make it into something great. And I think as it expands and as the pandemic lifts or as we adjust, we're going to just see great things happen here. And, you know, I couldn't be happier with the program. So thank you and thank you for the presentation. Any other questions or thoughts or?
I was just going to say, there's more than one person that wants Craig knighted, sainthood, whatever. But he has been a great part of this program.
Yeah, just really the secret sauce. Like I said, yeah, I'm pretty sure there are about a hundred and forty thousand people that would say we should maybe elect him president.
Well, I think we, at the least we,
Exactly, knighting is better.
At the least, we ought to consider an ordinance that you can't retire until you have fifty years.
No, we like Craig too much for that.
I think he loves it enough that he might just do that.
Well, he lives here, right?
Subtle pressure, if you guys.
He lives here and he'll keep helping whether he's getting paid or not. Okay.
Both programs deserve a round of applause.
Item seven C, the charter school safety concerns. I was informed the, we don't have all the information put together for that. So unless there's some objection, I propose we continue that for a week, that discussion. And then we have the council calendar. Any question about that? Or anything that needs to be brought up with regard to that? Hearing none, we'll move on. Eight A, any potential future agenda items? And let me start that by saying we've got a memo today on deer control. I don't know if that's the right term, deer.
I call it the deer memo.
The deer memo. I think probably we'll want to get some staff input on that. I don't know what would be recommended. So we're going to be talking about that today or another day.
We can talk about it. I'm prepared to talk about it today or we can put it on as an agenda item, whatever you, or as a, you know, discussion item, whatever you guys would like. I'm, I'm prepared to, to discuss it now or next time. Your pleasure.
I confess, I didn't know it was an issue until today, and I'm not joking, within an hour of that memo, I saw a deer at the Burger King right off Forty-Seven South. Yeah.
In the drive-through or?
Big one, like with the horns and everything. Stop traffic and we were all just staring at it as it just crossed the street. And it went and sat in the bushes at the, the Intermountain Clinic right there on Bangor. Yeah.
So I think it started because I received a call, a complaint. They have three-plus deer living in their backyard. They're eating their entire garden. Normally they bobble quite a bit and harvest their gardens. There's nothing to harvest this year. It's been a problem for a few years. They think it's been made worse by Mountain View, which could or couldn't be. They're living with it. They've tried everything to deter them. They can't do it. There's other neighbors around them that are having the same problem. So they just want to know if there's any help out there. So I think, you know, and of course they called the county and the county said, well, we have this really great program and for thirty thousand dollars a year, West Valley City can be part of it. Or we can do it on our own, which I think, like we did with the skunks and raccoons, would probably be the most effective way. So.
So would we need an ordinance to do it on our own? I mean, I don't think we passed an ordinance with skunks and raccoons. Lane, take care of it.
Right.
Or find the, the contractors that'll come out and take care of it.
So in this case, because they are governed by different, because the animal itself is governed by a different regulation, there is a process and you saw that in Lane's memo, we would have to pass an ordinance allowing for that and, and get the direction from the Natural Resources Division to, to instruct us on that. But that process is totally doable. I know as Lane mentioned in his memo, many communities have done that. And we're happy to proceed as staff to provide that. Lane's comment as, at the end of his memo, I think was a long. along the lines of, because we think, although again, who knows, that this was caused by um, the Mountain View kind of displacing them, maybe it will, maybe it will calm itself. Um, but I don't know. And I don't know how long, you know, I personally have no idea how long that may take. I don't, we don't have an idea on numbers from a staff perspective. You know, we don't know if we're talking one herd or if we're talking many herds or just what. So um, I think however the council would like to proceed, we're prepared to go, go either way as a staff.
Well, I know Ms. Mills said they've had the problem for quite a few years. It's just been a lot worse this year.
Lately.
Yeah. So I think it's been a problem. If we had a solution, it would probably be helpful. I know with Bountiful, the neighbors complained. Then the city came in and said, okay, we'll have archers take them out. And then they complained about that. So I did ask this homeowner and she's like, no, we're fine with whatever means it takes to disperse them or get rid of them.
You know, if we were gonna look at contracting for the thirty thousand dollars, I think we might want to give it some time to see if we need to do that. Where it's just contracted as needed, I think we should probably go ahead and look at an ordinance. Unless, I mean, do we have enough nods around the table to do that or?
I, I'd like to explore more of this recommendation to uh, provide education and resources to, to residents to discourage the deer from from entering and remaining on their property.
Well, you can, I can send you her email and she can tell you all the things they've done to try to deter them.
The ordinance would require that we make it illegal to feed the deer, right?
Yeah, right.
Encourage them to
Well, and they don't feed it, but they definitely eat their garden. And that's, you know, when you live right at the foothills, I can understand you're planned, you're planting a a salad for them every year. But where they're so far in, it's kind of discouraging to plant a garden, tend to do all the expensive stuff and then still have them come in and destroy it.
I think in other jurisdictions too, the thing that has, I think sort of moved the pendulum is when folks start to have um, vehicle accidents with the with the animals, if they're, um, you know, if they're in
Crossing the road?
Yeah.
I forgot about that part.
That kind of gets, I, I'm not aware. We can do some research on whether we've had that, maybe have had that once or twice in the city, but um, I know when you have a higher population, that's more common, a higher deer population, that's more common.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's dangerous. And I haven't, I've seen deer on Bangor as well. I haven't seen them at the Burger Kings, probably because of that new meatless burger.
Yeah.
They can go there. But uh, I mean, obviously, we don't have to pass an ordinance, but maybe let's
Bring it, sure.
Go.
Great.
And include, uh, I think Lars has a good point there, but I think the ordinance can encompass that because we have to include that they, you know, you can't be encouraging the deer to come here because that's encouraging. And then we can educate how to discourage them, but the animals are hard to teach. Any other potential future agenda items? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to council reports. Okay, hearing none, we have an RDA meeting scheduled for October fifth and an RDA agenda. Is there a presentation on that or?
No, sir, that is the, I don't know why. That's just the other side of the budget.
Right. Anything uh, Ms. Lang, you'd like to address on that or ask about that today?
I'm comfortable with everything on there, so.
Okay. Then we do have a need for a closed session today for a discussion of the character, professional competence or physical or mental health of an individual. If uh, we could have a motion and the second, we need the super majority to go into a closed session.
Second.
And so um, we will not conduct any other business other than that and would stand adjourned then from this meeting.
Do we have enough people in attendance to do it?
Hi.
Is that Dawn?
That's Dawn, hi.
Are you on the teacups?
No, I'm actually sitting in a statue in California Adventure.
Okay. So that's one. Hi, that's six of us. So even if we had seven, that would be a super majority. Oh, five of us, which still, right? Right, we just need five.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll take a short break to clear unnecessary personnel for this meeting and then we'll be adjourned.
Stay not allowed.
And we need to get back onto the new
So there was a Zoom that was sent, so if Mr. Christian can log in that way.
Okay, you've got that, Dawn?
I can text him if you do.
Okay. So
John, would you forward you her email?
Sure.
I don't know how much detail she went into of what they've done to try to discourage them.
And I don't know what Lane has in mind for